I don't know if I've ever heard those bells before.
Well, maybe it's something good.
Everyone's got a seven.
I think we're always talking.
I was gonna say though, I know it's.
Alright, it's seven o'clock, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order, we'll start with the roll call.
Cox?
Here.
Griswold?
Here.
Crampton?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Robertson?
Here.
Okay, if everybody can stand, we'll say the pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome everybody to the first council meeting of our new term. Before we move forward, I'd like to welcome Jesse, who is our new council member this term.
Thank you.
Come on Jesse.
Welcome.
Look forward to doing some good work together.
I can say the same.
Alright, now with that, we will move on to the approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve agenda as presented.
Support.
Griswold?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Crampton?
Yes.
Robertson?
Here.
Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to public discussion for items not on the agenda. Is there anybody in the audience that has any public discussion for items not on the agenda? I do not see any hands, so we will move on for public discussion for items on the agenda. Sir, would you please step up, say your name and address, please?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, my name is Jeffrey Chacoine, I'm at two three five five zero here on River Drive. I realize this is on the agenda for later, so forgive me if I'm jumping ahead on you, but after our most recent election, seeing that there was a need for additional council members, I wanted to put myself forward as a potential council member. I intend to submit that in writing to you all, but I wanted you all to see my face so that you know that I'm serious. I've gotten the habit during COVID of watching these meetings online, so I thought I'd actually come and say hello again. I've owned my own in Rockwood for twenty years now, my background is in government and in corporate government relations. I would come to the council with understanding of ordinance and legislation, how it's crafted, how it works, what it's for. I also have experience advocating for constituents at all level of government. I think that would be helpful for the council as well. I've had some small part in most regional projects downriver, anything from healthcare, transportation, economic, environmental development. In some small way, I've worked on a lot of that. I've worked with all the regional organizations that the city works with, DCC, Semcog, MML, all those kinds of organizations. So I think my experience and relationships could be a benefit to the council, and I just wanted to put all of that out there for you. Thanks for your time, and I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And we will be addressing that later also. Okay, anybody else with the public discussion for items on the agenda? We don't see any other hands. Council, anything else?
No, I just want to say, this will be new for all of us, as Swazner's not here to make the motion, so. I think that's where the struggle's coming.
We'll need some more vocal people, so, alright, we will move on to the action agenda.
Motion to approve the action agenda, council minutes of November fifth, 2025, and accounts payable.
I'll second that.
Johnson?
Yes.
Crampton?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Robertson?
Yes.
Okay, we will move on to report subsidy officials, and we will start off with the police department, Chief Kraus, step on up.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, a few items on my agenda for tonight. First one is going to be request for training. I requested permission to send Officer Harstberger to the Reed Interview and Interrogation School. It is being called the Canton Township, so it is a short drive form. That's January twentieth through January twenty-third. They will be fundable through the continuing professional education funds at six hundred and thirty dollars. So I would ask for a motion to approve that training fundable from the CPE for six hundred and thirty dollars.
I will make that motion.
Support. Crampton?
Yes.
Robertson?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
And my second one is unfortunately repairs to another police vehicle. Our two thousand twenty-one Explorer was taken in, report of some suspicious front end noise during the inspection. Both front lower control arms needed repair. Total cost was thirteen eighty-six eighty-three. Again, it was unsafe to operate for patrol use according to the mechanics, so I had it done under an emergency repair. So I'd asked for approval to pay Conway's car care amount of one thousand three hundred eighty-six dollars and eighty-three cents funded from the repair and maintenance fund.
I'll do that, to approve, motion to approve the payment of Conway car care in the amount of one three eight six eighty-three repairs to be funded to repairs and maintenance fund.
Support, I just had a question, you said it was an emergency, who deems that it's unsafe to drive?
Well, I rely on the expertise of mechanics.
Okay.
I am not a mechanic by any means. If they tell me that it is not suitable for police work, I will trust, take their opinion on that.
And so that's what happened here, they said, under no circumstances, can you drive it?
They said, well, we can drive it back to the shop and wait for approval, or we can just get it fixed right then and there. And since, you know, it's one of the cars we use on a regular basis.
Okay. I think there was a support, yeah. Cox?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes.
Crampton?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Robertson?
Yes.
And final item for me is the monthly report for the month of October. Officers responded to four hundred twelve incidents resulting in twenty-one arrests, and we issued fifty-six traffic tickets during the month. So I would ask for a motion to accept and file a police activity report for the month of October twenty-five, which was dated November twelve of twenty-five.
I'll make that motion to accept and file the police activity report for the month of October twenty-two five as dated November twelfth, twenty-two five.
Support. Crampton?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Robertson?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes.
Unless there's any questions, Council, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, we'll move on to the fire department report, Chief Markier.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, I just have a couple items. First off is the fire report, and I apologize for this being a pretty much useless fire report, but they changed the program on me, and I haven't been able to figure out how to get a better, more detailed report on this yet, so I hope to for next month.
Technology.
Are you looking for a motion to?
Yes, yeah, we had forty-three calls last month, majority of them were medicals, so.
Okay, I will make the motion to to accept that, sorry, I was looking to see if there was footage on that.
I will second that.
Robertson?
Yes.
Crampton?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Second item I have is hopefully the last repair bill for the ladder truck. For Reliant Fire Apparatus, which is, used to be Hall Equipment, who we bought the equipment or the truck from. There was a module out that didn't allow the ladder to move, so it pretty much rendered it useless. So that had to be replaced for two thousand fifty-five dollars and ninety-four cents. And then there's gonna be a train, I'll do that after the original motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Johnson?
Yes.
Robertson?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Crampton?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes.
And then I request that twenty-two hundred dollars be transferred from the fire equipment fund to the repair and maintenance fund to cover this invoice.
I'll make that motion.
Support.
Crampton?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Robertson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes.
Couple other items, and I apologize for not having a formal letter in your packet. It's just a request for the Goodfellows to be able to do the street collection on December fifth and sixth, like we have for the past forty or fifty years.
I'll make that motion.
Support. Griswold?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Crampton?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Robertson?
Yes.
And the last item is just kind of an FYI. We will be having the Santa driven around the fire truck this year on December fourteenth, starting at one o'clock. And I'll post the, it'll be the same amount as last year, I'll post it on the fire department's webpage, or Facebook page.
We'll put it on the city webpage too, make sure we have it up there.
I don't know if you have spoken to Santa or not, but do you anticipate that regardless of weather, that will, Santa will still?
Yeah, we had it rain last year, so hopefully it's a little nicer for him.
Chief, could you go over the leaf burning policy again for you, since I ran into it this weekend?
Yeah, yeah, as of right now, since Wayne County has a ban on any burning, open burning, which includes leaves and, I mean, unless it's a cooking type fire. So open burning of leaves is not allowed in the city. Somewhat of a health issue for people that have asthma, that type of stuff. Plus, it's the limited space we have right now, you know, trying to burn in people's yards or.
In your driveway.
Could be.
At the road.
Could be hazardous for right now until we, until more information is determined.
Thank you, Chief, I appreciate it.
That's it, unless there are any questions? Alright, thank you.
Alright, we do not have a treasurer's report tonight, and we do not have a DPW report. We have no consideration items, so we will move on to our administrator's report, Minister Trush.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, I've come tonight with a request to hire, I'm requesting approval to hire Caitlin Berger for the position of deputy clerk. This position was previously approved at the July second council meeting. Caitlin currently serves as a records clerk in the police department, where she's demonstrated strong organizational skills, attention to detail, and a commitment to public service. She's eager to take on new opportunities and assume greater responsibilities within the clerks department. I'm recommending a starting wage at twenty-two dollars per hour with an increase to twenty-three dollars per hour following a satisfactory six-month performance review. I attached the resume with this memo, so I'm looking for a motion to approve Caitlin Berger as deputy clerk.
Motion to approve Caitlin Berger as deputy.
Actually, a question.
Sure.
How will this?
We don't have a second.
Alright, yeah, I'll make a second then, so I can ask a question. And then I would like to make a question about how will impact, will she stay on with her current position at the police department? Will she move, or how will?
No, she will be leaving the police department, we will be putting a transition plan in place to make sure that they are not too far put out by this transition. But she will be leaving the police department.
Alright, thank you.
Any other questions?
Crampton?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes.
Robertson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you, and I just want to say that I'm very excited. I'm very excited to have Caitlin coming over to the hall and to be able to help carry out, I think it's gonna be a really good thing.
We welcome her, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. There is no attorney's report, so we'll move on to the mayor's report. We'll move on to talk about making council seat, and seats. I prepared a memo. There was an oversight this year that we came across, and I will read from my memo. An oversight has been identified regarding the duration and appointment for Councilwoman Merkier's council seat. Councilwoman Merkier was appointed on April seventh, twenty twenty-four. According to the city charter, section five six, office of council, vacancies occurring in the office of council more than ninety days before the next regular city election must be filled within forty-five days by a majority vote of the remaining council members. The appointed individual is to hold office until Monday following such election, at which time the vacancy shall be filled through election for the remainder of the original unexpired term as provided in section C four five of the charter. During this past election, November twenty-two five election process, an oversight occurred in addressing this seat in accordance with the charter. The administration acknowledges this error and respectfully requests council's grace and understanding as we work to identify and implement the proper corrective measures. At this time, the administration is consulting with the state of Michigan, Wayne County, and local court system to determine the appropriate legal and procedural remedy for this situation. Updates will be provided to the council as additional information becomes available. I have further updates, I have spoken to the courts, they declined to get involved. We have spoken to the state of Michigan election, Wayne County elections, legal counsel. They basically says there's no violation of any kind of state law, this is just a charter oversight, and it's up to us as a council to rectify the situation. They said that going forward, we need to recognize the vacant seat. Charter says that Councilwoman Merkier's term should have ended by council language the Monday after the election, would have been last Monday at seven thirty PM. As you can see, she's not up here, this has nothing to do with anything that Councilwoman Merkier did, she did nothing wrong, it's an oversight made on multiple different fronts. So that's why we're here tonight to recognize that, be transparent, and let everybody know what happened. So again, we're here also to move forward and rectify that situation too. We have two open seats, so at this time, Councilwoman Merkier's seat, his term is expiring in twenty-two seven. We also have another council seat that did not get filled and nobody put in for during the election, that expires in twenty-two nine. So what I'd like to do first is ask for a motion to recognize a vacant seat for the term expiring in twenty-two seven.
I'll make that motion to reappoint.
I'll second that.
Councilwoman Merkier.
Just for the term expiring in twenty-two seven.
We have to.
That seat.
First, I think proper, we first have to recognize that the seat is vacant.
Okay, yes.
I think you should probably recognize both seats being vacant, and then if you want to recommend an appointment, do it after that. But I think you have to recognize the seat is vacant before we take the next step in the charter, which is to even nominate or appoint someone.
So, right now, I'm asking for a motion just to recognize the vacant seat for the term that expires in twenty-two seven.
I will make that motion to recognize the seat being vacant for a term expiring in twenty-two seven.
Support.
Okay, now we'll take a vote on that.
And then, okay, that's fine.
You, go ahead if you have, you want to talk.
No, no, that's fine. Johnson?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Crampton?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes.
Robertson?
Yes.
Now I am asking for a motion to recognize the vacant seat for the term expiring in twenty-two nine.
I will make that motion as well, to recognize that seat is vacant with the term expiring in twenty-two nine.
Support. Robertson?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes.
Crampton?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, now those seats are recognized, as vacant. Now, did you have something that you were gonna say?
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Councilwoman Merkier.
I'll support.
Okay.
Prior to doing that, I think we have several council applications available. Did you want to first hear from those other applicants?
I'm good with this.
Okay.
We, okay, we, I'll address that right now, we have several applications. I'll just go into my updates, we have another gentleman that wants to put in his application too. In my updates, we have the application process open until November twenty-fifth at four PM. I'm leaving that open, we are inviting all applicants to come in at our next meeting on December third. Speak to us as council, tell us why they want to be on council, ask them questions, is it like an interview process? And then the following meeting on the seventeenth, we will vote for those members. This would be separate, as your voting, you're asking to appoint Councilwoman, you're back on to the council, that's separate.
Yep, and I supported it.
Okay, now are you, are you asking for her to be on for the twenty-two nine term?
Yeah.
Or the twenty-two seven?
Well, because both, yeah, just to clarify, because now we have two vacant seats, one for the twenty-two seven term, one for the twenty-two nine term. You have to appoint, you know, both of them, there's no charter provision that requires like waiting and taking applications. We've done that in the past, I think just because we've had a problem having enough people that want to do it, which was shown in the election that people didn't even run for the one open seat. But there is no requirement for that, so right now, both seats are open. So to make that motion, I think you need to clarify which term you're doing it for, because that's gonna set up when we have to have an election for those seats going forward.
So originally would have been twenty-two seven, right?
Well, yeah, whichever one, you can motion her for either one.
I said twenty-two seven, that would have been original, motion for that.
Or you can do, like, set it to twenty-two nine.
Okay, twenty-two nine.
Well, it's up to you, I'm just saying we've got to make sure it's designated.
We just, yeah, you gotta make sure. Twenty-two nine would be the longer term, twenty-two seven is the shorter term.
Let's just make that motion report, Councilwoman, for the term of twenty-two nine.
Support.
There's a support on that, okay.
And then I just wanted to say, when she was appointed previously, I voted against that appointment just due to the close familial aspects of other members of council, and so I'll be sticking with that vote of a no.
Okay, so, well, we're gonna do a roll call vote, so we have, go ahead.
Griswold?
No.
Robertson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Crampton?
Yes.
Okay, vote passed, so she's essentially back on council, is that correct legal?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Any more talk about that, trying to be as transparent as I can with everybody?
Actually, one other thing, because of what I was, I think I was reading across, the vacancy filling is that regardless of which term she was in, she would still have to run for reelection in twenty-two seven.
So, yes, so right now, there's a little bit of, I think, confusion with the way the charter reads, because it says at the next regular city election versus just an election, and we're trying to get more clarification on that. At a minimum, or at the latest, yes, it would have to be run in twenty-two seven, but we're potentially looking at if the language to clarify it, if it might have to be the twenty-two six election, actually. And that actually goes for both the seats, so if we determine that it is the twenty-two seven election, that the other appointment will just go till then. The seat that Councilwoman Merkier just acquired, she would still have to run in twenty-two seven again for that remainder of the term. So at a minimum, there's gonna be an election in twenty-two seven for it, but we're trying to determine if we need to do it in this one.
So there's a little more research.
We wanted a little bit more clarification from the county and stuff on that.
And I'm wondering if this is a highlight on maybe an ordinance that we need to review and maybe have clarified for future reference.
Well, sadly, it's a charter.
Well, we can revise the charter.
Charters are.
Yeah.
You know, there's a lot of work in changing a charter, they're not like the ordinance, there's so much notice, but I think if we get clarification, we should be fine, like I said, it's just, it's a little bit language wise when you say a regular city election versus, is that comparing it to a special election or a primary election or the general election of the state, that's what we're trying to really clarify. So I think once we get that clarification, we shouldn't, we shouldn't have a problem, but because this just came up, you know, we've talked to some different people, and we're just trying to get, you know, a solid answer on that, because we don't, we don't want to have this problem again.
Yes.
But I, I wouldn't say it's overly ambiguous, but you know, the charter was drafted a long time ago, so sometimes tend to capitalize a word when they didn't really mean to make it a capitalized word, and it all of a sudden has to become a defined word, so. We're trying to work on that, but that's why we're taking these steps to at least correct it. We'll know, I would hope shortly.
Right.
What we have to do with the election for it on the next time, but.
And that's why we're taking these steps in the public eye to make sure that we're doing this, so everybody can see why, this is why we're doing this. And I want everybody to know again, this is not anything to do with Mrs. Merkier's fault, nothing to do with it. And we've reached out to, got several state officials, several county officials, several legal officials. I've reached out to several legal officials and the court system, so there was a lot of research done, I want everybody to know that there's a lot of research done, so. Okay? So, did you have any more, Mercy?
Yeah, I was just thinking, you know, again, it may, it may be in the best interest of the city, should, should any of us not be sitting in this administration, and the next group of folks that come along may have the same issue with the charter, where they're having ambiguous words, and so it's brought before us. It might be worth looking into, no matter the amount of work that it takes to clarify the charter language, is my thought.
I mean, we'll look into it as we're going, and see if that is something that they need clarification. Problem is, election law can be very specialized, so we, you know, we're trying to get an opinion from someone who's specialized in that.
And there was talk of hiring an election attorney to sort of look at this and maybe give us some sort of an opinion.
Right now, we started with some of the election officials, but they haven't really given a concrete answer. So, we're trying to work for a little bit, you know.
We wanted to rectify this as soon as we could and move forward with the other council seat now, with all of our applications in, so. Okay, well, let's move on to my second memo, and that is, I have a motion, I'll be asking for a motion to appoint John Wasner to the planning commission.
I'll make that motion to appoint John Wasner to the planning commission.
I'll second that.
I just have a comment on that. As we're discussing this, I just want to give a reason for my vote. I am respectfully opposing the appointment of Mr. Wasner to the commission. Factually, Mr. Wasner's voting record, while he served on city council, reflects opposition of transparency inside council chambers. So I feel like the residents of Rockwood deserve transparency across all commissions and all boards within the city, so for that reason, I'll be voting no.
Well, respectfully, I disagree with that, I've worked for two years with Mr. Wasner, and I think that he's been nothing but transparent, and every time we've had any questions about anything, he's brought all kinds of research for this thirty years in the city to the board and helped us with anything we needed, so I disagree with that wholeheartedly.
If I may also make some comments, shortly before the election, I had the pleasure of sitting in on a planning commission meeting, which of course, now that I'm on council, I am forbidden from attending. So it was my last chance, and I got to watch Mr. Wasner in action, and I was more than impressed with his expertise, leadership, and reasonableness. He very much drove the meeting when he was there in the capacity as the council liaison for the planning commission. And I do feel that his presence there would be a strong asset.
I agree with you, Jesse, I've known John for two years and leaned on him, and I got in, I had the idea of becoming a council member through John, because I was on the planning commission, and he's nothing but professional, and he's a, you know, a leader and a role model for this community. I think he'd be an asset there.
Okay. We have a second?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Griswold?
No.
Crampton?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Robertson?
Yes.
Okay, overwhelming, yes, passes. We go on to my updates. We had my Veterans Day breakfast last Monday, which was a great success, I think, we had a lot of veterans show up to the community center. We had a great breakfast, it was good to see a lot of dignitaries there. We had a couple mayors show up, a couple senators show up. Debbie Dingo showed up, so it was good to see a lot of people come down and just show their support for the veterans. We also asked for non-veterans to give a ten dollar donation to the Rotary, that we could give the money for the families for Thanksgiving dinners for our local community, so we raised about a hundred and eighty-five dollars, and that we're gonna give to the Rotary, so they can buy Thanksgiving dinners next week. So it was a great success. With the money, we started, we started working on the both clarifiers for the treatment plant this week. Those are big projects, I think they started yesterday on one of them, we're doing one at a time, so that work has started. Again, we are taking apps in the city council and online for city council. You can pick them up in city hall or get them online till November twenty-fifth at four PM. We will be inviting all applicants to this council meeting on December third, and then we will have an informal process of coming on up, and if they want to ask questions, and you can tell us about yourself and anything else that you want. And then we will have, maybe we'll vote that night, maybe we'll, I'll talk to, talk as a council, or maybe we'll, I don't, what do you guys think? Do you think we'll have enough time to do it that night, or do you want to wait, push off till seventeen?
Does the charter allow for additional time?
I don't think it's specifically states in the charter.
So what the charter says is, I think you have to fill the position within forty-five So, what the charter says is, I think you have to fill the position within forty-five days of it, of its being declared vacant, that's why we declared it vacant, so now we have forty-five days, so.
We counted, and it's, it's within that time.
Yeah, that's, forty-five days gives us all through December, I believe, pretty much.
So, but that was kind of the timeline we were looking at, just to, so we could all kind of research everything and go from there. Here on River Yellow Jackets football team, hooray, uh, the, uh, the freshman and JV teams, both teams went undefeated this year, ten and oh record. And this past Saturday, they both became Peanut Bowl champions, awesome, awesome. And that is awesome, because the Yellow Jackets are a Rockwood-based organization, right here out of Rockwood, and my stepson played for the Yellow Jackets. Uh, my daughter helped coach cheerleaders for the Yellow Jackets, and we love the support this community gives them, so congratulations. Caitlin is the president of the Yellow Jackets organization, so we love the Yellow Jackets, congratulations to them for the Peanut Bowl win, so I wanted to shout them out. Uh, when this project started for the M dot exit ramp on I seventy-five, they told us two weeks, uh, I have got no more updates. No more updates, spend a lot of week.
Two weeks.
I would expect another week maybe, but I've got no more, we've got no more updates, we requested, I hope it's only one more week. Uh, I will try to have, reach out and see if we have anything else. Uh, I would also like to thank River Village Restaurant, who catered the Veterans Day breakfast for us, as usual, like last year, everything was great. They ran food, we needed it back and forth, they were awesome, thank you, uh, River Village Restaurant. Uh, last thing I have is, next Wednesday, the day before Thanksgiving, we will be closing for a half a day, uh, twelve noon, twelve o'clock, for the holiday. And that's it, and we will go on to old business, um, we do have a, a item on our old business, chickens. You guys have some ordinances from other cities, so I'll open it up to you guys for chickens.
Um, I'll, I'll start.
Yep.
So, looking at our, our current ordinance, and looking at other cities' ordinances, um, our current ordinance, it's, we don't allow chickens based off a current order, right? So, having said that.
I think we do.
Domestic, domestic, we do not.
Yeah.
And domesticated is, is a chicken that can, can lay eggs or juice the meat, and that's what it says in ours.
Can have.
If it's a pet, you're not using it to lay eggs or produce for meat.
Does Randy have a copy of it?
That's what.
I got it over here. I mean, no person should.
I don't think we can have chickens at all.
It says domestic, but it does say, and I know that.
Well, pets are domesticated though, so it doesn't matter if it's a pet or if it's, but they're saying, it says domestic.
I have it right here.
Oh, do you? Well, go ahead, Rick has it, so go ahead, Reece, I don't.
Yeah, I can read it, so.
He's got it.
Yeah, I have it here.
Go ahead, Randy.
So, uh, didn't mean to interrupt. Well, that's okay, so no person shall keep or house any animal or domestic fowl within the city, except dogs, cats, birds, fowl, or animals commonly classified as pets.
And, and that's the, uh, the outdoor one, right?
Yeah, chicken.
But what is it, it's something that produces eggs or meat?
Yeah.
Well, then we need to define it in the ordinance if we're gonna.
Yeah, so, and then looking at other city ordinances, we, around chickens, right? So, based off of what I'm reading here, and what other cities have, right, we have nowhere near anything relative or ready for chickens to be housed. Pen sizes, how many per acre, we have none of that in place, so to say chickens are allowed, um, based off of this, I would say no. Um, 'cause we have nothing in place that says what you can and can't do, how they need to be penned, how many you're allowed, how many, how much property is needed. Um, I did quite, you know, quite a bit of reading on this, and owning chickens is, is quite a big deal. That's just my opinion, so the ordinance, I, I say no as far as according to our ordinance, so if anybody else has anything, that's.
Well, I guess you could say, we could change the ordinance to allow, if you wanted to, so the question, I guess, really was, did you want to allow chickens or not? Not necessarily what our ordinance says right now, because we can modify the ordinance if you decide you wanna do it.
You wanna come on up, man? If you could just state your name and address.
I, I didn't know if you took points of information, uh, my name is Heather Smiley, I'm a candidate for U S Congress, but, 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 but I'm, I'm talking about the chickens, so, um, uh, representative, state representative Jim DeSena introduced legislation for backyard chickens in January of this year, and it addresses a lot of the information that you were talking about, so it has a restriction for a quarter acre, it says it's limited to five chickens, so, um, it's for the minutes, um, it's House Bill forty, forty-nine, and forty, fifty. So you can look at, that was forty, forty-nine, and forty, fifty, so you guys can look online, it already sets up the framework for some of the bigger things. It says you have to have a quarter acre and, and different things like that. From an implementation perspective, um, it's looking at a zoning ordinance, so you guys are kind of having the discussion ahead. Um, it was introduced in January, but it's not even in committee yet, so you guys are kind of ahead of the curve in that regard, but there is language that you could easily repurpose, um, if that was just something that you decided to do. Um, from an implementation perspective, um, we have that, we, we have, in Riverview where I live, um, we have, we, we currently have the same legislation that you do in your charter, that you can't have chickens, however, I'm grandfathered, so, um, and there has been people in our city who have gotten them, and, um, basically, they had to get rid of them, but I, but I can, um, I don't wanna take up your time now, but if you'd like to speak with me after, I can talk to you specifically about the, the pros and cons and pitfalls, and opportunities of things that you would need to consider to do that, because I've been working on backyard chickens for, uh, several years. So I could, uh, maybe help you with that if you decided to take that forward, thank you.
Thank you, Heather, I appreciate it. What, let me just throw this out there, was brought up to me by Jim, what about a, a survey? Like, if three of us or four of us don't want chickens, but two hundred people in the city do want chickens, I mean, what if we have a survey for people in the city to say, three people want chickens, but two hundred don't want chickens? That gives us an overwhelming amount of people that don't want chickens in the city, with some stipulations to it, too.
I think, uh, there's also the option to, um, allow chickens on a probationary period, uh, say a year, or two years, um, and then revisit something, and address any complaints that might happen during that time, um, you know, neighbor complaints, or, or, or whatever that may be, that's a possibility.
I don't wanna get into the, I don't wanna get into being zookeepers here, I just, just an ordinance, and that's it, and I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to get down on a leash either for this.
It's a brownstone acre.
I mean, yeah, there's gotta be stipulations, just obviously.
I would tell you, it's, it's, it's pretty common that places that do allow chickens, and I'm not saying exclusively, but they have a minimum lot size. That, that's, that is pretty common, because you don't want, you know, a little tiny lot with chickens all over it, and your neigh- and the problem is, the neighbors are on top of each other, um, a lot of times, yeah, it's a quarter acre, it can be even more, uh, it, it just depends, but, that, that is a consideration that you have, you know, if you're going to allow. I, I think that was kind of the, the question, and, and I don't know off the top of my head, how many, you know, if there was a quarter acre, how many, um, you know, residential properties in Rockwood are actually a quarter acre, I mean, usually in the city here, these are not quarter acre lots, so.
See, I'm reading, I'm reading brownstone right here, and it says only in parcels of one acre.
Yeah.
There's.
I mean, quarter acre, a quarter acre is actually smaller, some, I, I think so, I wanna say Westland may be about a half acre. Like I said, I don't know, but that is a consideration that they usually put in the ordinance, is your lot size.
Yeah, there's gotta be stipulations.
So, I, I had something prepared, if, if I can just, uh, speak for a minute, um, I compared and contrasted, um, several cities, and including some that weren't, um, provided by the chief, and, uh, basically, there was four common things that involved in the ordinances, that was a, a rooster restriction, um, health and nu- uh, nuisance rule, or, um, language, uh, permit or zoning compliance, and then the fact that there's no commercial use, uh, it's residential use only, um, so those were some things that I thought that, um, you know, should we allow, uh, private residents to do what they want in their backyard? That those definitely, that language should be applied to, to the ordinance, um, and particularly, um, Gibraltar has, um, has a great, uh, ordinance with pictures and a map, talking about the exact, um, minimal feed that needs to be between you and your neighbor, um, the, the cooper pen, um, and I think if all of these things were implemented, um, number one, having a permit, um, I think that that would, that would start the, the cascade of, of things, is to first have a permit, meaning that you would need to show, you would need to submit your, your layout or your back, your backyard, or something of that nature, but as people have mentioned before, and I, and I interviewed a couple residents, um, some were opposed to it, and some were for it. Um, you know, chickens are a lot of work, and, um, it's not, it's, that's neither here nor there, but, um, it's, it's not really up to us to decide whether we like them or not, it's, it's whether or not, as officials, we should be policing backyards. Um, so, I, I, you know, again, these, these four things, I'm in favor of adding allowing chickens, I already spoke on that before, under certain conditions, absolutely, you know, no roosters, as we spoke on, I think that that was the number one complaint of residents, if we, you know, again, I'm not against the survey, but I, I'm sure that's, that's one of them, um, and then no commercial use, possibly having something in the ordinance similar to Gibraltar about, um, having your stored food in a, um, rodent-proof container, um, possibly having a fenced-in run, I mean, there's, there's a lot of provisions that we could add, but I think the first thing we should talk about is whether or not we wanna allow backyard chickens.
If I may, I'd like to also add on that, well, Marcy actually beat me a little bit to the common themes there, 'cause I went through well, and I actually found the same themes, although I think they were a little less consistent on covering the exact nature of nuisance, but it made me think about the whole question of why anybody would want to regulate and or ban chickens in the first place, and it comes down to, well, nuisance, people would complain about it, it's the on- only reason it even comes up, and the only reason we're talking about it is somebody complained. And it's our work to see about it, that these complaints are ultimately served. And so I think that whatever we do should emphasize on ensuring that it is the least noisome and at least of a nuisance, whatever it takes for that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't disagree on that, and, um, when I was interviewing one of the residents, I asked them about, um, th- this particular resident actually has a neighbor who has chickens, and, um, you know, the comment was made that, you know, dogs can be a nuisance as well, we know, you know, dogs are up at five A M. barking for hours, or the little Yorkshire terriers, non-stop barking all day long. Um, that would be considered a nuisance, um, in my opinion, so, yeah, it's, it's definitely, um, it's definitely, I can understand the nuisance rule, for sure, but just wanted to point that out. So if, if we need to make a decision, or we need to move forward, I, I would like to make the motion to, I guess, the issue was, is the verbiage in the, um, in the first place, correct, was whether or not chickens are pets, is that what we're addressing?
Well, I, I think what we wanted to address is, if we, I guess, my thought of the way to do it is, if you wanna allow some chickens, we start with that premise, if that's what the idea is, and then I can start drafting an ordinance that, because ultimately, you'll have to vote on an ordinance that contains the parameters that you want on it. But I thought before, be- because it, I'm sure when you looked at all of it, there are a lot of different ordinances out there, so what we need to do is, I think if you started with chickens, I would draft what I believe is kind of in the best interest from the input that I've heard, and then we can, you know, send that around and determine if we think that's enough, or if there needs to be more, what restrictions you wanna see in it, with, there's definitely a lot of model, um, you know, I'll look at the, the House bills that went out and see what they kind of modeled those as, um, and we can kind of start with that, and trying to address the concerns you made, yeah, roosters are almost never allowed anywhere, because they're automatically almost gonna be a nuisance every morning when the sun comes up, so, so those are pretty easy, but we also have potentially the lot size issue, if we wanna address that, where a chicken coop can be built, you know, how far off property lines, the sizes of it, um, if those are gonna be allowed, we need to, I think we need to, you would need to specifically address those types of things, because that's really, when you get the permit, that's what you're gonna be asking for generally, you're gonna be saying, okay, these aren't my plans, almost like a building permit. These are my plans, okay, these are offset enough, it's far enough away from your neighbors, it's not too high, it's, you know, whatever those parameters are.
No free range, you would have to be in a cage, right?
Well, they definitely, well, I don't know about, uh, free range, I, I think that's, yeah, I, I mean, those, but those are all the issues that you have to have, um, obviously.
And I think it would have to be limited by acreage and how many chickens.
Yeah, how many chickens, and things like that, so, um, I would say if you wanna kind of move forward with that process, that we'd like to s- see that, to clarify our ordinance, that yes, we will, we are gonna allow it, to change it to that, and then I could start drafting some things, um, for review, so you guys, can I, so you can see them and say, well, maybe I'd like to see this in there, too, or, you know, we don't really need this, or that, and kind of go from that, that's, that's what I said last time, I mean, there's no, no right or wrong, it's just a matter of gotta decide first whether we want them, and then start looking at the ordinances in detail, because the, there are, none, there's not just one out there. Um, I like the idea of the House bill, I'd like to see what that says, because I suspect that took a, a little larger global picture of what was going on to do it. And maybe start with that and draft it, so that's, that's kind of my thought on it. Unless someone has an ordinance that they really like, and they say, this is the one I want, and we're gonna vote on whether we wanna do this one.
Yeah, I'm, I, I would like to move forward, but if, if, to make things easier, so we're not going back and forth, if we could talk about maybe some things that we would just go ahead, are already something that we wanna put on there, I also think we didn't address number of chickens, you know, um, and, uh, I, I think that's another concern in the city specifically, um, as someone said, you know, you shouldn't just have one chicken, because that's, uh, you know, chicken abuse, that chicken needs a friend, uh, I don't know anything about chickens, but you know, fifty chickens is, is, is absurd, I don't think anyone needs, uh, fifty chickens in their backyard in a city. Um, so I think that limiting the, the number for, you know, egg use consumption, uh, that's quite a, quite a bit of eggs, if you figure each chicken lays one to two eggs, uh, that's a hundred eggs a day, so, um, you know, I, I was thinking, there were, there are different numbers in, uh, the city models, and I was thinking, just, I just picked a number, five, I thought, you know, maybe limit it to five, no, no roosters, um, and then having a permit should be, you know, mandatory, and coming with that permit, a site plan, um, which we would have to develop together, so that was my thought.
I don't think we should put anything on it right now, I think that we should just, like Jim said, decide whether we want chickens or not, and then put our, give our parameters to Jim, and let him draft it, and then let him look at the state, the forty, fifty, and forty, forty-nine, and see what that says, and then, then we can talk about our parameters from there.
Yeah, I agree.
Because there might be some wording in there that would help us out with what we want, I mean, the main, the main question now is, do we want chickens, or do we not want chickens? Then we can tweak the parameters of what we want for the actual ordinance.
I don't, I don't think we're going to draft an ordinance in the middle of a council meeting.
Yeah, no, I'm not suggesting that, I was just saying.
I don't wanna lock us into numbers either.
I was gonna say, I don't think anybody wants to. I was gonna say, I don't think anybody wants to be around for that long.
Question, so if we were to look at for, a house bill 449 and 450, do we have to make a decision today on whether we want chickens, or can we investigate it further?
I, I think we can, we have no problem investigating it, I mean, I can look at those, we can pull those up, you guys can look at them to get some more ideas. If you want me to kind of move forward and kind of say, these are the issues I think you want to address. How many chickens, square footage of the property, permits, no roost. We can kind of draft that by looking and seeing it. You really don't, you don't want to say, okay, we can have chickens, because you really want to just pass the ordinance if that's what we're going to do when it's kind of full. But if it was more, let's deter, if there's enough support to go forward, then, you know, I, I can start putting in the work to doing it. I just want, my last comment was more, if no one in council was going to vote yes to have chickens, then, you know, doing it didn't seem to make as much sense. But if you're all, say, interested in pursuing it, that we should look further into it to start drafting an ordinance, then I, I would say we start with that, not an official vote on everything right now.
I'm, I'm sorry, I was under the impression that we were supposed to come with that information today, but so yes, I want to move forward, yes. Do I need to take a formal vote on that?
You, you can, I don't think you need to vote on it. Go ahead.
Oh, I just have like a comment kind of, I'm not mainly assuming, but I'm guessing most of you live in spaces that probably wouldn't supply chickens. I'm not, I don't know where you all live, but also I think that you should see the interest of who people want to have chickens. Bring them in and say their reasons, because most of you probably live in a space that either you either do not want chickens yourself, or the people around you may not want chickens, but there are certain areas in Rockwood that do supplement the area for that, I would say. So having those people come in and speak on why they do want chickens, and taking a vote, I mean, we're a very small city, and I would say the spaces of houses for that would be very limited, but the, the houses and areas that do, I think it would be better if you heard their opinions of why, instead of just taking a vote. Maybe a slate, like a tally, if you will, and, and just saying what, why their reasons are for having it.
I love that, but the same people here show up to the same meetings every day, and they all know, everybody knows when the meetings are.
I mean, I used to go ahead and go forward and have Jim start looking at it.
Sure. I have no problem with that, yeah, to see what's going to be involved in it. And then you, you have your list of things that you said were the most.
Yeah, I, I mean.
Give to Jim?
Yeah.
To include in there?
And I wrote that down, I mean, it, I would say let's, let's do that. I mean, you don't have to take a vote on directing me to do that, if you tell me to do it, I will.
Do it.
Do it.
Do it.
I'll do it and present it, so that everyone can review it and, you know, kind of make comments on it before. That would be the easier way, because I don't want to take, keep coming in here and taking votes, I don't want to change that to this.
Well, let's just draft something and go and see what, how, what it looks like.
I agree.
I mean, I can plug in what I would maybe recommend, and then, you know, you could change it. Leave some things blank, like the number of chickens, you know, how many you want, and those types of things.
Do you guys want to have a study session and talk about it, and we can invite the public, they can come to the study session, or? After you draft it?
I have the survey thing, like you were saying too.
I mean, you can draft it up and we can have a study session and come and discuss it. How does that sound?
Yeah, I'd be up for that.
Yeah. After you draft it, and we can, that way we have it in front of us, and we can go from there. Fair enough?
All right, yeah, I agree.
All right. She'll post it everywhere, and we'll make sure everybody knows it's coming.
Yeah, like I said, I'm just will look at that, and I would say, if, since, you know, you guys kind of looked these up already, if you have some you kind of liked and you said, you know, these are provisions that I like in here, send them to me. Because like I said, there's all different, there's no, I don't want to duplicate the work you guys already done.
I'm with you guys, I just, I want to get, I just want to be done with this. I don't want to keep going back to this.
Yeah, I want to make sure we're, you know, like you, I don't know nothing about chickens, so I'll do the first two minutes, I just want to make sure we're doing the right thing.
Sure.
That, that's, you know, that's the goal, right, make sure we're doing the right.
I just think like the city in this area will not, is not very open for like regular to have chickens, so. I don't think like a vote from the public is probably going to be in the favor of chickens, because I don't think a lot of households are looking to house chickens or to have chickens. But I think the people that do want chickens probably have a very valid reason, and they should, maybe if you want them, then you said, you were talking about permits, they should also probably maybe state their reason. So if they convince you on your vote.
Yes.
Well, let's, I mean, let's get a motion to, you guys want to pick a day in December here to, for a study session?
Oh, let's see, so.
Do you want to just do it before a council meeting like normal?
Yeah, it's fine with me. Yeah, that way we're all, everybody can make that.
The third?
Teacher?
Yes.
Okay. Well, what about you?
I'm out of town next week, so I just.
Seventeenth?
You want to do it the seventeenth?
Yeah, I want to, I want to be able to get it to you in enough time that you can review it.
Well, that's a couple of weeks, seventeenth, fifteen, how do you look in there? Okay, seventeenth, tell everybody, look.
That's good.
Yep.
Seventeenth, Scott?
Yes.
Do we need more than six o'clock, do we need 5:30-ish? What do you guys think?
I would say so, I, you know, the last couple sessions we've had have gone, we've been tight on time, but I, you know, that's just my opinion.
5:30, you guys are chicken crazy, 5:30?
Given how much we've talked about it already.
Yeah, all right, 5:30, and then we can take a break after for the meeting.
Good point.
All right. Heather, you coming? You are chicken, you're chicken experience, so.
And I, and I live, and I live in a city and I have chickens.
Perfect, we need your input, all right.
So I can tell you the [inaudible] and everything.
Sounds great, all right.
Do we need a motion?
Do we need a motion for that?
Yeah, yes, please.
Okay, I'll make.
I will, I'll do it.
No, go ahead.
And I make the motion that we.
Mrs. Griswack, ma'am, sorry, Miss Griswack, ma'am.
All right, then I make the motion that we hold a study session on December 17th, the Wednesday, at 5:30 PM for the purpose of discussing chicken ordinances.
I'll support that.
Crampton?
Yes.
Robertson?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Griswack?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Crampton, do you have any more old business?
Just want to thank the Yellow Jackets, I accept three, three of my sons through there, and my grandson's going to be playing. He's six, I think he's going to be, I think he's eight.
Seven, they can play at seven.
He'll be out there next year.
Yeah, that's awesome.
My granddaughter, too.
Yeah, congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
We're there.
Thank you.
Mrs. Griswack, any old business?
No.
Mr. Robertson, any old business?
Nothing old.
Mr. Johnson, any old business?
No.
Okay, on to new business, Mr. Crampton?
No, thank you.
Mrs. Griswack?
Yes, I have four items for new business. The first one, I'd like to ask council, or make the motion actually, to request that council packets in their entirety be made public and available on the City of Rockwood website. The posting of these packets should also be done on the same day that council receives the packet, so the public gets the information the same day council does. I believe that providing this information to the public freely and without formal written request via FOIA, and the potential fees associated with the FOIA request, will facilitate inclusivity for residents, transparency within the city legislator, and will work to build a trusting relationship between elected and appointed officials and those whom they serve. So I would be looking for a motion, I'd like to make the motion to post the entirety of the contents of the council packet on the City of the Rockwood website on the same day that council receives their packet. So I would be looking for a second, if anyone's interested to discuss.
Okay, we have no second. So the motion dies.
Okay. My second, uh, my second new business is a speaking role for the clerk. It has been a tradition in Rockwood, I'm told, for many years, that the city clerk is not granted a speaking role during council meetings. I kind of find this practice outdated, and I think the clerk serves the residents, she is an, he or she is an elected official. I believe that he or she should have a seat at the table for discussions and updates. I feel like when, when we appear, respect the role of clerk, I believe others in the city will as well. So I'm looking for a motion to add this section to the council agenda effective immediately, titled Clerk's Report, for the purpose of discussion and updates from the city clerk.
I'll support that.
I don't think there's anything wrong with that. No, I, he was just asking me, I.
There's nothing in Charter, that's why.
Support.
I didn't see anything on Charter about it.
I don't think anything that would, like a department head report, correct?
Johnson?
Yes.
Merker? I'm sorry, still on my list. Cox?
Yes.
Crampton?
Yes.
Griswack?
Yes.
Robertson?
Yes.
And then, actually, I moved that for another time. And lastly, I was just informed today, the Rockwood Housing Commission is formally inviting members of council to their annual Christmas party, that'll be held December 22nd at 5:00 PM inside the community room at the Urban Brewer Building. And that was it for new business for me.
Mr. Robertson, do you have any new business?
I do, I actually have a couple of items here, let me circle this around real quick. Well, first, since this is my first meeting up here, I would like to give a brief introduction. As everybody has probably heard, my name is Jesse Robertson. I actually moved here to Rockwood back in 2021, middle of the pandemic, wouldn't recommend it, that sort of moving time. Before, I had lived in Hazel Park and Taylor. Hazel Park, I had actually served the city in appointed capacity, also as the, as a commissioner on the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, and as chair of the Historical Commission. When I came here, one of the first things I did was in 2022, I joined the Rockwood Area Historical Society, you know, went with what I know. And through them, I did help organize and run some of the events that some of you might have spotted me at before, such as the annual spring tea, and also most recently at the Haunted Museum and Spooky Caboose. It was early this year, I decided somewhat on a whim to run for council, and I was actually a little surprised and rather grateful for the amount of support I received from pretty much everyone I approached. Now that I'm on here, I'm definitely looking forward to bringing and helping with a lot more great things going on in the city. Which leads me to the other item of new business I have. The Rockwood Area Historical Society is going to be hosting two events here in the city. The first one is our Cookie and Candy Sale. Yes, we spell it with a Y because, well, when we first started this 25 years ago, it was spelled like that, we decided to keep going with it that way. This will be held on Saturday, December 13th, running from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, where we'll have a variety of donated baked sweets to be purchased, as well as a number of raffle baskets. Those wishing to donate can simply show up to the museum at as early as 9:00 AM that day to go. Yes, please. Drop them on. Unfortunately, and this leads me to my other event, is that unfortunately, we used to have Santa present in the Caboose on a day. Instead, he will be present on Sunday, the 21st, where we've decided to term the event Santa's Whistle Stop. Probably the last Santa appearance we'll get to see for Christmas. This will be between 10:00 AM and 1:00 PM on Sunday, the 21st, again, at the museum. For those that don't know the address, that is at 2, 32787 Wood Street, so just a couple of blocks from there.
Walking distance.
Yes, indeed, well, Moses says walking distance, really, or biking if the weather's nice enough. And I hope to see quite a few of you there. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson, any new business?
No.
Yeah, new business?
No.
Okay, the only thing I have is I would wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, have a happy holiday. And I'm Mr. Slavin, and I'm sorry, I forget your name. Before you guys leave, just make sure that we have your phone numbers, so we can call you guys. I think yours was on the application, so we'll make sure we get a load of you guys, okay? So with that, I would ask for an adjournment.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Crampton?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Robertson?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Griswack?
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned.